Today is Monday, March 10th, 2025. I'd like to call Binghamton City Council Work Session to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. To the republic and to the state, one nation, united as one.
Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Murray. Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Rathwell.
Present.
Councilmember Medavetzky is absent. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Council President Dundon.
Present.
Thank you.
So our first presenter tonight will be John Solek. This will be on RL 2551, and I will turn it over to the Chair of the Employees Committee, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you. So RL 2551 is a local law to establish term limits on the role of the police chief. Mr. Solek, do you mind sharing your thoughts on this?
Only in show business all my life.
You know.
Can you hear me?
It has to hit green.
Yeah, okay. They get the same kind of mics in Endicott. I'm gonna check into bid rigging somewhere, you know? Someone's got the concession on these microphones. So the thinking behind this, the background is, it hit me when, you know, Binghamton's only had, I think, four police chiefs in 50 years. My, my collar, I'm not, maybe I'm not counting my grade school chum, Rick Tronovich, who was police chief for a couple, a couple of years, and then he went to broom security for $15 an hour. I don't know whether he, you were paying him too much, or, but anyway, we had a police chief butler. He went to Vestal, and there's a big controversy, quarter million dollar payout to him. And it was because he, they could have been in a lawsuit. That was the rea, well, he could sue us. We have to buy him out of his contract. And the thought came to my mind, said, well, why would you give someone that old? And I mean, I'm not being ageist about it, but this guy was, you know, he was all over 65. Why would you give him a five-year contract? You know? I mean, there wasn't anybody bidding for his services. It's not like, hey, you don't hire me. I'm going up to Syracuse, you know? So the average police chief in this country lasts five years, and it doesn't matter whether it's a nobody or Mike Bratton. And that's, that's what, that's what, you know, cities that are having issues and trouble, sometimes they figure it out that it's at the top. They change at the top. Uh, we have a police chief, I don't know, 2009? It's, it's not the papacy. It's not the papacy. It's not a lifetime appointment. It's the Binghamton Police Department. And this, and you ask yourself this, who would resist this? Well, the same people that resisted term limits. I mean, we had council people that said, well, the city can't have term limits because they'd been on council for 25 years and wanted to be on it for some more. The mayor, Boochi, 12 years. He won at 16. So they, they fought it tooth and nail, Boochi and Rich David. Boochi never came down here, but Rich David and Elaine Miller, those people came down. So I can't imagine anybody except the current chief of police, maybe his wife, that would object to this. And it was not about him. We're not making it about him, but we're making it about the office. And you know, police reform comes in many, many things. Come hysterical type police, you know, calls for police reform, moderate eyes back to blue, I do the, this is just like, you know, should I say it? Common sense. See, that was my, that was my combination of the last two presidents. Common sense. And, and that's what it is. I, and how could you make a case when you got an eight-year term limit on the mayor? How could you make a case for no term limit on the police chief? And that's what this town is about. It's all, you know, nobody cares about the potholes. It's just about the police chief. It doesn't make any difference. It's the police, it's the police, it's the police. And he's got his custom wheels out there. I just went by. If you want to check it out, you know, custom wheels. So that's, that's what it is. It's about, I, I don't see, you know, and, and you know, and the extra part of it with the not going back to the department is just because I'm familiar with the clever devil mind that permeates Binghamton, and I could have seen somebody that was the police chief, and then all of a sudden, he does this eight years, and then, oh, no, he's going to be the assistant police chief, because that's, that's the way Binghamton works. So you gotta be one step ahead. But that, that's what it is. I don't, I don't see, I don't, I don't see the harm in it. I don't see how it would affect anybody, plus or minus. It just, just puts a lid, the same lid that you got.
Yeah, actually, John, we talked about this, and this is something that I'm, I really like, and I've been working my way through figuring out the contract and everything already surrounding the chief and seeing how we can implement this and move this forward, because this is something I agree with you 100%. The mayor's got term limits, we have term limits. It only makes sense the police chief has term limits.
Common ground, brother. Common ground.
So, does anybody else have any other questions or comments on this RL?
Sure. John, do you know how long other cities have had a police chief?
The average is five years.
Okay.
That's, that's how long, and that's according to the police chief's trade associations.
Yeah, from everything I've seen, just in my preliminary looking into it, it's normally five-year contracts is how they roll that out.
And then they renew it again?
Which, like John said, they'll be renewing it for a police chief who's 72 years old. So why, why they do a five-year agreement like that? That's, that's a whole nother discussion.
Okay. I'm also curious if other areas have that stipulation that prohibits the chief from serving in any other capacity? Do we know? Do you know, John, in your research?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else on this RL? John, don't go anywhere, because you're our next presenter.
Boy, I can't get enough of myself, so.
All right, so John Solek is still our presenter. This is RL 25-52, and it's in the Rules Committee, and I will hand it over to Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Okay, so, John, you're here to discuss another proposal, which would be under RL 2552, whether we should pass a local law requiring City Council to approve settlement for disbursements, I assume settling claims for more than $2500.
Yeah, uh, this again comes from your books downstairs, you know, those leather-bound books, the minutes of the council, 70s, 60s, 80s. You'll find in there that the council did approve settlements of all types, you know? Kid hurt in a playground, $2,500, council had to approve it. Somewhere along the line, this disappeared. And I, I, I don't know, and I can't find, and I, you know, I've been out of town during some eras, but I can't find when it was done away with, but it was done away with. And, you know, uh, there's a lot of claims that have been settled. And, you know, when claims appear with serious charges, and there's a settlement, that, that doesn't negate what was said in those claims. I mean, nobody's saying, well, we'll, we'll settle it for a little money and, and it'll be a nuisance, but the, the, the claimant never says, oh, by the way, I lied. He didn't say that. This didn't happen. Nobody, nobody says that, right? So, uh, we, we gotta assume that all these unpleasant trees around here, again, some of which involve the police department, are being swept under the rug, because nobody knows about them, you know? So, and that's the danger of this. That's the danger of this. You, you, you don't know what claims are, are settled. You don't know how meritorious they are. You know nothing. Somewhere along the line, the mayor said, settle this, right? Well, that's tax money. You, you sit here in, at budget time and probably say, well, what's this 2,500, or what's this 5,000, or what's this 10,004, you know? So, uh, and you want an answer on it. Well, there's, there's no reason that you, but more importantly, the public, the public should know. And you go back to the newspapers of the 50s and the 60s and the 70s and the 80s, you know, Mrs. Davis or Mrs. Smith is suing the city, and the council just approved this settlement, you know? So it doesn't have to be a personal injury case. What I'm concerned about is a lot of this misbehavior being covered up. That's what I'm concerned about. And when you allow the executive to settle claims that even could be embarrassing to him, you know, what, what are you signing on to, you know, by, by not doing anything about? So I don't know about you, but I think you all want to know where the money's spent, and I think you should have the final say on whether a claim should be paid out or not. City self-insured, you know?
I had a question. So to you, what would that process look like then? Because usually those things are done through court counsel.
Well, if you, if you go to the town level, village level sometimes too, what you'll see is every meeting, every disbursement is checked off, right? Is, is approved by the, by the town board. Now, they don't have a lot, but it doesn't involve payroll. It involves, you know, 10,000 for this, 10, and it, and it goes fast. It goes fast. And essentially, the, the town board, or even the public, can, can get a legal pad out and, and keep a ledger of what's going on. And, and that gives you a running total of what's going on. Here, you, you don't have that. So if, if, if the executive is given carte blanche, let's take the amount. Say, see, the, the ones that are settled for small potatoes are more curious than the ones, I mean, if, if there's a settlement for 100, 200, 300, I thought, maybe it's gonna be on a website, or maybe it's gonna be in the newspaper, maybe, maybe, maybe. But these other ones, like I say, the allegations are serious. So if allegations are serious, sex harassment, all kinds of stuff like that, and they're being settled without the knowledge of the city council or the citizens, what the heck does that say? I mean, it, it says to me, it's a crooked deal, you know? I mean, uh, so, I mean, I'm not suggesting, by the way, that everything be fought tooth and nail, you know? I mean, and, and again, I'm not interested so much in the personal injury aspect of this, although that's a, that's a point, but all these little bitty things that are around in the dirty little crevices of this city that show people are not behaving right, and they're using city funds to pay off people, not to squawk, I, you know, I don't know. But it, again, if it was done in the past, why isn't it being done now?
Does anybody else have any questions for John?
Bob, is there a, is there a threshold that it would be customary to come to council at this point? I mean, we have discussed settlements when they sort of reach a certain level, but.
Yeah, so the way it's currently set up is there's authorization for my office to settle things for below $2,500. Once it hits that $2,500 mark, it has to go testament apportionment at the very least. And then there's that window in that amount, right, where you have to sign off on it, and you're supposed to notify council of those transfers. Beyond the $10,000 amount, that all goes to City Council for approval.
The, the one thing that I, I don't know if you're gonna be able to achieve, what you're trying to do here, John, is that, like, when it comes to us, we, the only time, I think maybe once this has happened, we go into executive session, and then it doesn't provide any more transparency for the public. So that's.
Yeah, well, exactly. But I, I do know that there's been claims, I mean, I'll foil it, but there's been claims that have been settled that don't have the council's approval. I mean, I'm not talking about this particular council, but I, you know, I mean, we can, we can get the, foil the, the payments and see what's up with it, but I, you know, and I is, if I might ask a question of the Corporation Council, is this in, in current law? I mean, how did this system come up? Because I?
Yeah, so this system is set out under Chapter 9 appropriations, and that has to do, so any, it's not just settlements, right? It's any budget transfer outside of that $2,500 mark. Beyond that $2,500 mark has to go through E and A, and again, once you hit that $10,000 threshold, has to come to City Council. And that, I believe, was first amended back in 2009.
Well, that would make sense. But there, there's no particular reason why these, why these settlements have to be hidden from the public. I mean, it's taxpayer money.
I can't argue with that.
I mean, when, so when someone files a notice of claim with the city, it's a public record someplace, yes? But we get it. I'm asking, is the actual notice of claim public record?
Yes, you, you could have someone foil.
And notice of claim?
Yes.
Does anybody have anything else? Well, thank you so much for presenting tonight, John. You have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, everybody.
Absolutely, John.
Our next presenter is Jeff Kruger, Superintendent for the Water and Sewer, and I will, it's RL 25-56 in the Employees Committee, and I will hand this over to the Chairperson, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you. So, um, RL 2556, Mr. Kruger, you're looking to amend the title for the Water Sewer System Maintenance Helper to assist with filling that position. Can you share a little bit more detail about that, please?
The current position that is funded is Water Sewer System Maintainer. It takes three years of training to begin to fill that job. At the moment, we don't have anyone with that length of time in service, so we want to drop the position, bring in another laborer or helper position, and get somebody else also in the running for training. Oh, we've been having some trouble filling the senior positions in the sewer department. We recently had two people transfer from water to fill in the sewer. More for the opportunity it afforded them than, you know, really wanting to be a sewer professional for their entire lives. Um, sometimes it's tough to fill the sewer side of the job. And we were very short at the beginning of the year. The next RL will show a large personnel fund transfer because we were short. We had one of four maintenance positions filled, which hurts the street reconstruction. It hurts the work we do with sewer systems, cleaning, and everything else. Uh, so getting the bodies out there, getting them trained up and ready to go when maintenance titles do open up is the better option than leaving empty titles that can't be filled for X amount of years.
So then that's what you're planning on doing, is just getting rid of the maintainer for now and using the helper and letting them graduate up like an apprentice, essentially?
Correct.
So, because that's what I was looking at, and seeing that the minimum qualifications and even like the CDLB, that's, that made sense to me.
Train them on getting their CDLB and all those things? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, Councilmember Middleton, it does say in there that the city will provide training for the CDLB.
Then would the long-term plan then be to reinstate the the original position at a later date once you feel like you have enough candidate to step into that role? Will be, will we be looking to reverse this decision?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I, I'm, I'm assuming the title already exists, the job description already exists.
Yes, it does.
We're just, you just don't have it in your, in the, in your line right now.
Right, it's just the number, this, the number of active slots.
Okay.
And, and what do you find the reason why you haven't been able to fill the positions?
The three years requirement. We had some fairly new employees. Some of them didn't stay, uh, the whole three years to receive the full training and the opportunity to move up. So we're in a position where we have these senior positions that are just sitting there vacant, because there's no one with the three years and the training and licensing to move up into them. So it's better to have some people on the ground doing some of the work than to wait for these guys to make three years with empty positions sitting there in the budget.
Are any consideration to look closer at the requirements to see what's actually needed to successfully do the job, and is there opportunities to modify that?
Two years ago, I dropped it to five, from five to three.
Got it.
So.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So is this positions you're trying to fill? Or is it just one?
One.
Just one, okay. So, so this is gonna run right into the next issue, but there's, there's the money that was left in the sewer budget personnel line this year was, I think, $133,000 or so. That is a consequence of these positions being open.
Yes.
Okay. And then the next RL, we're taking the money that's presumably in there, using it to repair pumps.
Correct.
But hopefully, we're also going to fill those positions, so then we're gonna be looking for personnel money again.
No, we, we have, everything's covered right now that we have. This is all of 2024 that the position was vacant, that three positions were vacant. We were using temporary employees from water, just in the role, still being paid out of water, filling.
Right, but we're about to amend the 2025 budget. Chuck? No, wait, well, just wait, just wait two minutes. Anyone else have any other questions?
I don't have a question related to this RL, but I did just want to mention, Jeff, that members of the Commission for the Conservation of the Environment are hoping for a tour of the water treatment plant in late April. So I'll reach back out about that.
Any other questions or comments regarding this RL? All right, moving on.
I'm gonna make a motion to expedite.
I'll second.
So we have a motion to expedite in a second. Can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton. Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Dundon.
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
So moving on, it's Jeff Kruger still presenting, RL 25-57 in Finance Committee, and I'll hand it over to Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Okay, RL 2557, ordering to amend the 2025 capital fund budget to accommodate major pump failures. Okay. What's up?
The 2025 was added by me because it was the correct date. I saw 2024 and just instantly switched to 2025. It is 2024 budget that is amended to free up these funds, not the 2025.
So we're using the leftover personnel money caused by the, that we have left over because we couldn't fill those little positions to account for this money we're about to spend.
Yes.
And that's okay. We haven't zeroed out the budget already, or what's the, no.
Couple more weeks.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Tell us what you broke this week, Jeff.
All right, um, Stokes Avenue, uh, we have three pumps there. Two of them are in service at all times. It's over on the west side by the armory. Okay. We had a pump failure. We swapped it out, got the backup pump in place, got it running, and then the second pump failed a week later. So we had two major pumps. These pumps are about 80 grand apiece, depending on what you do and how you do it. Uh, we went for an emergency purchase order through standard purchase, uh, Board of Contract and Supply to get one pump. The second pump, we've sent out to bid, so we weren't really abusing the emergency purchase system. Um, but this is the funds to cover the purchase of both of those pumps.
And then, I mean, what was the age of the pumps when it was serviced? Was, what, what, did something happen? Why was the, I mean, the scenario around why they failed?
Both of them wound up being basically electrical failures in the motors. They're submersible units. They're not something you can really work on and rip apart. Uh, they go to flight, their flight, so they're very specific with proprietary equipment inside of it and proprietary work and proprietary shops. So they're the only people allowed to repair them. The repairs are three quarters of the cost of a new pump. Uh, these pumps were 15, 12 and 15 years in that range for the two. I know one was a couple of years newer than the other.
And the third one is?
Still in service and keeping us from flooding. Uh, it was a backup, so it had seen, it had no hours on it until we put it in service. But that, during heavy rains, that area needs two pumps. So we've been running, hoping for no rain. It's worked really good for us so far.
Are you, are you looking to purchase the same proprietary pumps that you can't repair, force you to buy new ones?
The, the pump we purchased after getting some bids out there is not the same. Uh, came in cheaper, including the electronic swap that was necessary to run a different style pump in the house. Still came back cheaper than the original flights pump. Um, so we're open to different pump manufacturers, as long as they have a decent track record and the pricing works for us, we're open to change. Thank you.
So will the third pump that is the backup go back to just kind of being on reserve for emergencies?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other comments or questions? Seeing.
Well, just to clarify the back and forth. So this is actually leftover 2024 Water and Sewer Personnel money that we're moving over to the capital lines to pay for this. So it's not going to affect the 2025 budget. And we will still have the money that is budgeted for the new positions that we're moving around. So seems reasonable.
Yep. So seeing that this was checked to be expedited, can I entertain a motion to expedite this RL?
I'll make the motion.
I'll be expedite my own. Oh, excuse me.
Councilmember Kavanaugh made the motion. Councilmember Middleton seconded. Having a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Rathwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medavetzky.
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Dundon.
Aye.
Thank you, that is seven zero.
Thank you, Chef. So our next presenter will be Juliet Berlin, Director of Planning, and this is RL 25-58. Uh, it's in the MPA Committee, and I'll hand it over to the Chairperson, which is Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. This is RL 25-58, a resolution to authorize change of order two for the Ross Park Carousel restoration. So can you tell us about this, Juliet?
Yep, absolutely.
Waiting for this for a while, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a little bit of a timeline, but this is the final leg to get the relocation. Now it's a new development as well, construction of the housing and restoration of the horses. Completed. I mean, this will get us to the blueprint and the bid documents, the final design. Then we'll have to bid that and award that, and we're hoping to have the whole thing constructed. Then we'll have to bid that and award that, and we're hoping to have the whole thing constructed and moved in place. You know, by December. The contract, um, extension ends December twenty twenty-five, and I have to. Request another one, and they're getting a little hesitant, but they would most likely award it, but I'd rather not.
Um, do you know what you see that might be a block that would hold it up, or you're not sure yet?
No, we had a slight, um, delay. After the, uh, SHPO approved our, our design, and they agreed that the current housing. Couldn't be taken down and rebuilt safely. There was a conditions assessment. Um, we wanted to be able to enclose it, um, to secure it against vandalism. Um, some of the worst weather, uh, they won't let us weatherize it. They want it to be able to be opened fully for the pre-flowing air. Um, aspect of the carousel. They did agree to let us, um, secure it with doors, overhead doors, the garage doors versus, um, bi-fold doors. They then decided they preferred the bi-fold doors. Being of glass. So we changed, every time there's a change, we have to have new designs drawn, so that causes a delay. So they, they've agreed to the glass, that's all set. Um, I think I included that in the package, okay. And, um. We requested the, we want to have interior lighting, so I added that. Cause with, with glass doors and the lighting shining out, I thought that was an added level of security. Um, yeah, that too. And they agreed to that. So all the changes have been agreed to by SHPO and we're ready to roll, so I, I really don't see anything. You know, coming up. So this should be it.
It, from the pictures, it looks really nice.
Yeah, it, it's a, it's gonna be a nice. Um, the, the current shelter, the housing was built in nineteen twenty. Um, it's not part of the carousel, it was a, um, a freestanding carousel, it was actually a portable carousel, um. But because it was in place for a long amount of time, it was actually Department of Public Works, the City of Binghamton that built it in nineteen twenty.
Wow.
And it, it was not meant to last, it was temporary. Um, and somehow it is included in the National Register nomination, the shelter itself. So we had to go through a lot to have them agree to let us remove it.
I thi- I think it'll bring more people, um.
Oh, absolutely.
Like, I, I always feel like Ross Park needs more people. I, I definitely think it'll bring more people.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's been out of commission long enough.
Yeah, Christmas at the park, there's so many different things they could do up there.
So that's that. Hopefully.
So, did you want to state the revised timeline?
Um. Well, I, the timeline I, I have is from the, when the grant was awarded to now. So no, the actual, what we have is we're hoping to issue, well, you know, get this to EDR. Have them complete the, um, final design blueprints and then get the document out for bid in April. So, I'm. This should give them a month to do that. I don't know if that'll be long enough. If we get everything awarded in May, it'll be a short turnaround for contractors if we want to have it built by December, so. Right now, the schedule is kind of a hopeful one, and I'm hoping we can get it out by April. I'm hoping somebody is awarded in May, and I'm hoping we can have constructions start before the end of construction season.
Will it be helpful if we expedite this?
It would be.
Rather than.
I didn't ask for it, cause we, yeah. Uh, we do have some money remaining, like six thousand remaining, so I didn't request the next fortune expedited, but it would be great if we could. So.
Make the motion to expedite?
Having a motion to expedite, do I have a second?
I just had a question before we, uh, the expedition, so the expedition would make it move quicker, is that the, the gist of this?
Yeah, um, it, it will definitely help, yes, because then I can say, everything's done, here it is, go to it.
So, so what if we even, you know, I know that it would help it, but what if we waited just because it's not requested? And I don't want to put that on the people that do that, is that still okay if we waited for it, or would it affect it, like?
Um, I don't think it would slow it down, no, because they are moving ahead with it, they're using the remaining funds they have. Once the six thousand's gone, then they have to stop until the new funds are made available, so.
I, no, I understand, I just don't, I don't want to bombard like the people that it's set up on, as long as it's not. If it's like something that needs to be done, then.
It would be helpful, but not.
Okay.
It won't slow anything down, I don't think.
Okay.
I made a motion, but there may not be a second.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we do have a motion, but we do not have a second for expedition.
I'll second.
Having a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rathmel?
Aye.
Councilmember Medavatsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Nay.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Nay.
Thank you, that's five two.
Any other questions or concern, or comments regarding this RL? Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
So our next presenter will be Sarah Gloss on RL twenty-five dash thirty-nine, and that is in the Planning Committee, and I will hand it over to Councilmember Rathmel.
So this is RL twenty-five fifty-nine, a resolution to accept a strategic planning feasibility studies grant from NICE Ed.
Yes, um, and if it's helpful, I can talk about, I can talk about these two pieces of legislation together since they are related. But the first is the acceptance of a grant, and the second is entering into a contract to use that grant. Would you prefer I talk about them together?
I think it makes sense that way, yes, please.
Perfect. Um, so the first resolution is to accept a strategic planning and feasibility studies grant from New York State Empire State Development. I do want to make one correction on the grant application worksheet, it references a total project cost of a hundred thousand and a total amount of grant of fifty thousand. Local match of fifty thousand, that should be a hundred and ten thousand for the total project cost, fifty-five thousand dollars for the total amount of the grant, and fifty-five thousand dollars for the local match. That is reflected in the award letter, it's just incorrectly, um, noted on the grant application worksheet. So this is funding that we received from Empire State Development for a strategic planning and feasibility studies grant. It's fifty percent of the grant reimbursable, um, and this is to fund a downtown parking study specifically to update our twenty seventeen study. Um, that focused on downtown parking rules and regulations. Uh, this is specifically in regards to changes that happened during COVID, curbside management in particular has changed a lot, um, during COVID. And our parking needs have therefore changed. Also, unfortunately, during the creation of the previous parking study, um. The Collier Street ramp was demolished mid-study, um, so while some of that data was captured in our twenty seventeen study, not all of it has been captured. So this would give us an opportunity to more accurately, um, codify what our current parking situation is, including the new Water Street Garage. As well as plan for, um, potential changes to our parking landscape down the road. Uh, and this is a request to enter into a contract with Nelson Nygaard, they did our twenty seventeen study, um, and have all of our baseline data. This is an update to our, um, existing parking study, and the scope and fee are attached here for your reference. And I can take any questions on either or both.
So the significant changes that downtown post the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Study, you're representing the Collier Street. Demolition and the, can you talk a little bit more about how curbside management changed in COVID?
Yeah, so, um, it's specifically in regards to, um, primarily Uber Eats and Grubhub and all sorts of food delivery, but also Uber in general. So the Binghamton Metropolitan Transportation Study, which is our metropolitan planning organization, um, BMTS. Has actually been doing small-scale studies on different parts of the city about how curbside management is impacting businesses. The largest example that many of you have probably seen is outside of Nanny's Hot Chicken, um, that's a major curbside management issue. And not one that we had to deal with in this level before the pandemic. This is something that would enable us to just have more data to understand, do we need more loading zones, how does that take away from our existing parking assets? Um, we have had increased requests, I believe, into the traffic board for loading zones outside of specific businesses. Um, and so we're seeing kind of a change in the way that businesses want our parking to be used. Um, but I will say that there's lots of different opinions on parking, and so we want to make sure that we have data that we're basing our, um, changes, potential changes off of. And not just one business owner said this, one resident said that, one different business owner has a different use for their, um, their curbside or their needs for parking. But to have a robust set of data to work from.
The data will include the enforcement part of actually giving tickets to people.
In, in terms of the technology or in terms of the, the policies?
Yeah, and just looking at that, I know that's something that we regularly get spoken about at the traffic board.
So I think how this would primarily impact that is that we would look at whether what our current parking regulations are makes sense. So for instance, we have, um.
Not how much they're being enforced. The, the piece, I'm, I guess. The, the piece between the policy and the reality is what I'm wondering if the study is gonna capture.
I, I can't say for sure, but I think that's more of a budgetary resource issue, um, so this would really just tell us what the rules should be. Um, there are places right now, for instance, where there's two-hour parking versus four-hour parking. Do those need to be separate zones? Should we have more zones? Would that result in more enforcement?
Yeah, it's not entirely clear to me if it's, they're actually enforcing the zones, so.
Correct, so that, that is your main to the study.
Okay.
Is, is what the zones are and how that, how our technology currently or does not currently interact with zones. And whether zones make sense, given our ability on the backend to actually delineate between them.
Right, and you know, obviously, we don't want to go after people who are coming to shop in Binghamton because they selected the wrong thing in the app. I know it can be confusing, but at the same time, we have frequent flyers who, uh, have worked the system.
One thing we specifically put in here that I want to call out, um, is that we have a, and I can't remember what they call it in here, but essentially a communication plan for citizens. Um, for if there are going to be any changes, what those changes would be and why. Um, because we want to make sure that we're not only using best practices and data to make these changes. But we're also communicating them effectively and having enough lead time for people to understand what those changes are.
Sarah, I just had a, a, in the, in the project scope document, there was, they, they referred to a parking study that they originally didn't, twenty fourteen, fifteen. So is that, was it an original, we had an update in seventeen, and that, or I'm, I'm just trying to kind of get a timeline?
My understanding is that it was adopted in twenty seventeen, and I could have some of these wrong, um, this is Tito's, and I'm just kind of pinch hitting for him. Um, but it, my understanding is that's all the same study, it just wasn't adopted until twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Data collection on this could go back essentially a decade, a decade old at this point.
Yes, yep, so that's one of the reasons, one of the main reasons we wanted to do this in the first place. And then all of the other factors I've talked about kind of bolstered our rationale for why this was important to do at this time.
So also in the, that document, they talk about a project kickoff and goal-setting meeting, and I certainly hope that somebody from council, probably. Given her interest in traffic board, hopefully Councilwoman Medavatsky is in that, uh, session.
Yeah, I think we can have a conversation about who the correct representative is, given that it's the downtown district, but obviously Councilwoman Medavatsky has significant experience with the issues.
Either way, as long as council is in the loop, right?
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on these two RLs?
Uh, I guess. What, what's the turnaround time for when they start it and then when we get the final data? Do you have an idea?
That's a great question. I know starting, um, we would like to start in April, so this would, um, ideally be for a March twenty-sixth vote. Um, I do believe there's a timeline in here, but I apologize, I don't have it off the top of my head. The most significant amount of time will be in the data collection and making sure that we are collecting it at the appropriate times. One of the reasons April is important is it will enable us to capture the students before they leave for the summer, so that we don't have to wait until September to have that volume of data.
Oh, and the other, the local match is already budgeted for where?
Um, good question, I would have to defer to Chuck on that.
Chuck?
I think.
Capital Fund, alright. I just know it's coming out of the planning budget or your budget, but it's Capital Fund.
Yeah, and, and Chuck is going to provide the, um, the budget line before the final, uh, legislation.
It is also represented correctly in the transfer to Capital Fund, so fifty, at fifty-five K rather than the fifty.
Yep.
Anybody else on these two RLs? Okay, moving on. Our presenter is still Sarah Gloss, this is RL twenty-five dash sixty-one, and it is in the Planning Committee. And I'll hand this over to Councilmember Rathmel.
Thank you, President Dundon, so RL twenty-five sixty-one, a resolution to accept a creating healthy schools and communities. Grant from Broome County.
Yes, so this is a thirty thousand dollar allocation from Broome County, it is a pass-through from the state of New York for their Creating Healthy Schools and Communities program. Uh, Broome was awarded for a number of different municipalities, uh, and they work with them on one of the four areas of. Um, focus for the Creating Healthy Schools and Communities program, uh, in the city of Binghamton. This is community planning and active transportation, connecting activity-friendly routes to everyday destinations. So we work closely with the Creating Healthy Schools and Community Team out of the Broome County Health Department to decide where these funds should go. Um, they've given us their preferences for this grant round, which is supporting the four thirty-four Greenway with, um, additional seating. Specifically to support elderly folks who are using that as a recreation activity. Um, and we are also discussing active routes through Rec Park specifically with its proximity to the number of schools in that area. And how we can, um, make that, which is already a, um, pretty popular area for students to walk through before and after school. Uh, make that a more enjoyable, active recreation experience for those folks.
Is there an opportunity through, so my understanding is that the Health Department got just over three hundred thousand for the full grant. By identifying this partnership and the deliverables, is there an opportunity for the city to access a? Anymore than the thirty K that's identified for like complete streets?
Yeah, so they have represented that this is our allocation for this grant year, but this is at least my third year working on this. And I believe they've had these funds since twenty twenty-one, so we have done, um, a complete streets implementation. We adopted a few additional things into our existing complete streets policy, I believe, last year. Um, and have made some other investments over the last couple of years in coordination with creating healthy schools and communities. So, um, there's been some things that have been accomplished to date, um, as well as what they're looking for us to do now.
Just so I'm, I'm not confused, so there's different money for the Oak Street project? So it's a different, I just wanted, too many pots of money.
This is the money that Broome County wanted us to use for the Oak Street project, but at this time, the school district has asked us to hold off on spending any money there. Until they complete their study, and since this needs to be spent by the end of May, I don't think under this grant round, we will get to Oak Street. Um, though certainly if, actually, the ball is currently in Broome County's court, um, the school district told us, we're good for now, let's wait on the study. And I've sent that off to Broome County to see how they'd like us to proceed.
Um. I, I'll connect in with you, I guess.
Okay.
I, I think there may be some.
And I don't want to get in the middle of it, so.
Come, join in the middle.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Um, I, I, if we are focusing on four thirty-four Greenway. I did submit on behalf of one of Councilman Rathmel's, uh, resident constituents. Um, to the traffic board, a request for, um, raised. Spot by Ivan Ho getting onto the Greenway, um, specifically for wanting their children to be able to safely walk to MacArthur. From Southside West, um, so that's, I'm just flagging that, that I'm bringing, I've sent it to the mayor, who's right there. Um, to.
Is it a proceeding? Proceeding, you mean, or?
For, because the people aren't stopping at the crosswalk, even though there's a light and everything.
Up at the top, got it, got it.
So I, I don't know if that could fall under this or not, but I'm bringing that discussion over there, and I just want to make sure that discussions aren't happening in a silo.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Um, can you help me to understand, um, why the school district will want to hold off on receiving funds? Did I understand or hear you correctly?
They're in the middle of a study to determine what should be done on Oak Streets, rather than spending money that we're not sure is actually going to address the root cause of the problem. They want to have a sense of what the problem is and what the appropriate interventions are. We could easily spend thirty thousand dollars installing an intervention there that doesn't actually solve the problem, and so then we've, you know, spent a bunch of money. Created something that is permanently on that road, um, and then it doesn't actually solve the issues of the stop-arm violations and the, um. Chaos that is school pickup on Oak Street.
But there is an existing BMTS study.
I would have to defer to the Assistant Superintendent who advised me of, of what they are doing.
Keeping all the public documents that people can access.
And so will these funds be available once they, cause I know like we have to spend it by a certain time. But do you have any information in terms of like when they anticipate that that study would be completed? And will the funds be available to, um, support an intervention once we're at that point?
Yeah, so my understanding is that there is another year of this funding through Broome County. Yeah. So my understanding is that there is another year of this funding through Broome County. I know that that is their priority for this money to be spent on. So this is just for this planned year that ends in 2025, but my understanding is this program runs through 2026. So if there are additional funds to be allocated, that would be allocated during the next grant cycle. I do not believe that the study will be complete in time for us to do appropriate procurement and installation before the May 31st deadline, because the money has to be spent and the product, whatever it is, has to be installed by that deadline.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing that this was checked for expedition, can I get a motion to expedite?
Motion.
Hearing a motion, do I have a second? Having a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rathmo?
Aye.
Councilmember Madavetsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero.
And a comment, I will try and follow up on this before Wednesday.
Thank you. Thank you, Dussel.
So moving on, Sarah Gloss is still our presenter. This is RL-62. It is in the planning committee and I will hand this over to Councilmember Rathmo.
Thank you again. This is RL 2562, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Metro Group for 187 Clinton Street.
Yes. So I apologize for any confusion associated with this resolution. So back in 2023, we applied for and received $500,000 through the New York State Department of State Brownfield Opportunity Area Implementation Funding. As part of our application, it was always intended that this money passed through the city of Binghamton and go to the Metro Group for their pre-development work at 187 Clinton Street, specifically for environmental remediation. I've been going back and forth with the Department of State on what they need to actually execute the contract that would enable us to access those funds. And one of the things that they need is some level of agreement between ourselves and the Metro Group. So it becomes this chicken or egg where who has to enter into an agreement first, but New York State has said that we need to enter into this agreement. This does not obligate us to any funds. This is essentially saying we will act as the local program administrator and we will administer New York State Department of State funding on their behalf in, in line with the grant provisions. So Metro Group would need to provide all of the documentation to me. I would have to have that approved through the New York State Department of State before any funds would flow. And there will be an additional piece of legislation that comes down once I have the contract actually authorizing us to enter into that agreement and accept those funds. This is not that resolution, which is why there's no budget line, because there are no funds being transferred as a result of this. It's simply that MOU that allows us to get the contract from New York State.
This may have been discussed back in 2023 when originally identified. But how was so Metro Group, if I understand correctly, is out of Long Island? How was this bid?
So this was not bid. This was selected as a priority project for the city of Binghamton as it relates to affordable housing and environmental remediation. The reason that we were comfortable with this was that all of these funds are going into the land itself and not into the project. Or I would say not into the construction of the project. So any benefits that result from this $500,000 being spent come back to the city of Binghamton either as a remediated parcel or as basic plans and engineering documents for the project. I will say we are now substantially more complete on this project than we were in 2023. They are almost through their Brownfield Cleanup Program tax credit process, which will enable them to unlock a lot of the funds that will enable them to eventually build this project. They're currently hoping to be construction ready by the end of the year. Whether New York State is ready to fund them at that time is a different conversation. But this, they have successfully completed most of this work at this time. This is really just us papering the file.
So the site is identified in relation in relation to the Clinton Street commercial corridor, do you envision only commercial development on that site?
On 187 Clinton? No, it is a mixed use, commercial and affordable housing development with 120 units of affordable housing in addition to a small public square with commercial spaces.
And all of that dates back to the 2023?
For specifically this BOA funding. I would have to check my notes to when we first started working with this group on development of the overall project.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing that this was checked for expedition, can I get a motion to expedite?
Sarah, I'll make the motion.
Having a motion to expedite, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Having a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rathmo? Councilmember Madavetsky?
Aye.
That was a guess. Councilmember Rathmo just wanted to double check.
It was. Great.
Councilmember Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Murray?
Aye.
Council President Dundon?
Aye.
Friendly reminder that these mics do have interference issues. So if you're leaving yours on in between speaking, please try to turn it off. That might help.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down, Sarah. Our next presenter is Mayor Jared Cram and this is on RL 25-63 and it is in the planning committee and I will hand this over to Councilmember Rathmo. Thank you for joining us, Mayor.
Thank you, President Dundon. So this is RL 2563, a resolution to accept a 125,950 pro housing grant from ESD.
Yes, and I'll apologize in advance, some early allergies I'm dealing with, but we're okay. So this is a, a grant that was awarded through the consolidated funding application phase. $125,950 as part of the governor's new pro housing communities grant, which is a 50% match for scattered site blight removal project here in downtown Binghamton. The sites as identified by the grant are 2, 3, 4 and 1/2, 42 Fayette Street, as well as 12 Rutherford Street. So essentially this grant would pay for demolition of these properties. 12 Rutherford Street would stay as green space as terms of flood mitigation. The other parcels could be redeveloped or otherwise converted into housing or other commercial use. This, along with the block by block program, which my office will be announcing some details on likely tomorrow, will support redevelopment of that area kind of near Columbus Park. Obviously as part of the, the list of properties, 48 Fayette Street was part of this. I know that myself and council have had a lot of back and forth on that. That's part of the reason why I'm down here today. But essentially it's a blight reduction and clearing the sites to be shovel ready to allow for, for new housing construction. These sites have been a challenge for the city, specifically the ones on Lower Fayette. I will also make note that the properties that are included here were part of the settlement with Isaac Anzirout. The city took ownership of these properties as part of the agreement where he would not be involved in a real estate business for a number of years. 3 Fayette Street currently has a murky title on it, was not included as part of the original round of when we took these properties. Corporation Council has advised that, you know, we will continue to work on it, but it's not currently under a city ownership. And obviously we can't move forward with any type of demolition until it is. So that will be outstanding as a property we'd like to get a hold of or find a way to potentially partner with someone who is willing to take that on. There was a deed issue that just will take more legal work to kind of get through. But essentially it's a 50% grant for a significant amount of blight removal in the downtown area. And support the, the goals of pro housing communities, which is to, you know, upgrade housing.
I have a few questions. Oh, go ahead. Okay. So I got a bunch. So first, I just want to know why when we took over those, those properties from Isaac Anzirout, how come there wasn't like a comprehensive plan of what we're doing? We were going to do with them, even if they are in bad condition. Like I feel like we should have tried to upgrade them or tried to help with the housing crisis. I think by knocking them down, it just leaves it there and it's just a space, but it's really not helping. So it was in the headlines that, you know, we're, we're doing this and we're doing that, but I don't feel like knocking these properties down, which I know they're probably not in the best, the best condition and they need to be knocked down, but I don't feel like that there should have been a plan with this instead of that, like this. I feel like this helps with that money, but this money could have been used for something else, like upgrading places.
So when the city took ownership, when we agreed to the, when we agreed to the deal essentially, that was in late 2023. We actually took ownership of the properties summer of last year. I would say that as a result of the numerous properties we took over, there's, there was kind of multiple categories. There's actually a lot of vacant lots. There was at least one just strictly commercial building. There were a number of single family, multi-unit residential properties in various stages of disrepair. And we, we did have a plan and we continued to, to follow through on that plan, which is the properties that we can't really save or are causing neighborhood issues or neighbors have been complaining about. We've worked toward demolishing. We have partnered with both the Broome County Land Bank as well as First Word Action Council on affordable housing projects on some of these properties. 181 Holly is one of them. We're utilizing vacant lots on Clinton Street as part of the First Word Action Council's current 9% application before the state. And then also sought out this type of grant funding to further, again, the blight removal. What I would say is that in a perfect world, yes, every property that is in derelict condition, we find a way to, to rehab, to get it back on the tax rolls, to, to get those units back there, back in, in operation. A lot of times that just is not possible, given the condition of the buildings. We knew in taking on this portfolio, which is just a small sliver of all of the properties that Anzirout owned, that we were doing so with, with knowing that a lot of these are going to have to be demolished. The fact that we got that deal done and he's no longer involved in the real estate market in Binghamton. We knew that we're, we're going to have to take a, a bit of a risk with it. We were going to have to take on these properties that certainly the city doesn't want to be a landlord. We don't want to own these. They carry liability having them. And, and as I think members of council have known, there are still a few of them that had received, you know, significant fire damage during the time that we owned them. So that was a, a risk that I was willing to take to get Mr. Anzirout gone from the city of Binghamton. And I would say that we're continuing to follow through on that plan, knowing that a lot of the properties, based on their condition and lack years of divestment, had to be knocked down.
So then what about the people that are in those properties that live in those properties? So I, just back to that, I feel like there should, there should be a plan for people that live inside of those properties. They, you know, even though it might not be up to code, a lot of people that, excuse me, a lot of people, that's all they have. And so like, what is the plan to relocate them? Not just to a shelter, not just to emergency housing like we, like if we took on that task as the city, like we should be responsible for making sure that people have that, the housing there. Like I said, again, it looks good on the headlines that we took this down, but I don't feel like there was a comprehensive plan on, it wasn't executed properly on how we are supposed to take care of the people that are also still in the, the housing.
Yeah. So, so certainly there, there's a legal process. I mean, in, in circumstances which a majority of the Anzirout properties, these are not habitable rental units.
I know, but if someone doesn't have a place to live, it's still habitable until they have a place to live.
So.
I think that's the piece we also haven't gotten clarity on. And I know we've sent a number of requests in terms of how demolition rather than rehabilitation is determined. And what the city is essentially paper trail toward that end would be. My understanding and representing the plan that you've identified is that that plan only involved your office, Corporation Council and Code rather than what should truly be a community driven conversation, given the impact to city residents who will no longer have are the properties in disrepair? Absolutely. But if I could just first state clearly a question, how is demolition rather than rehabilitation determined?
So the city's vacant property officer, and this is a process that's been going on for, for a number of years. And actually was born out of the annual, back when, you know, Broome County was doing tax foreclosures. Hey, there were 50 properties that maybe the city has access to getting. So before they go to auction, what are the ones that make sense for us that need to be demolished? What are the ones that we can partner with the land bank on? Are other nonprofit housing providers interested or are those properties near, let's say, an OFB or a first ward project? And, and those were also diverted to those agencies over the years too. So basically there's, there's inspections that are done. We look at it from a planning standpoint, from a code standpoint. And having, you know, been involved with or running demolition programs in the city for about 10 years now, you get a pretty good idea of, of those that will require demolition and the ones that are, are able to be saved. But one of the things real quick is that there's a non-zero risk to the city of having these properties being lived in by, by folks that we know is not up to code. We've seen it, whether it's putting first responders at risk, putting the people that live in these properties at risk. So from a standpoint of, yes, if all of the properties were up to code and were safe, I agree, shouldn't be demolished. People should be able to, to live in them and we shouldn't interrupt their housing. But if they are not, and they're not only dangerous to the people that are living there, but potentially dangerous to the surrounding community, the city has a responsibility to reduce its liability to not have knowingly people continue to live in the, these situations. It is again, a risk for first responders. It's a risk for the people that, that live in these homes. And, and sometimes again, if you're talking about illegal electrical or, or squatting situations, some of the, the situations that we've had on Fayette Street is, you know, widespread narcotics trafficking out of these locations. You start to deal with public safety issues at a higher level than just looking at the actual structure of the building. 181 and 182 Holly Street are really good examples of places that, in my opinion, should not be demolished, right? They were both vacant. There was no one living in there. We're able to partner with the first, or excuse me, land bank on, on one. We're exploring options potentially even with Binghamton University for 182 Hallery, Holly, excuse me. So it's, it's a, it's not exactly a perfect science, but part of this too is again, if we know that these buildings are unsafe, then we can't allow them to continue to be occupied as we can.
In terms of not a perfect science, still to me is a challenge when it comes to transparency. So there are properties that do not have current or recent code violations. So you may represent a process with a vacant property officer, but there's otherwise no, we'll call it paper trail for identifying the distinction transparently between demolition versus rehab other than city process or city preference, again, because that conversation is limited solely to code and corp counsel and to your office. I also think it's significantly disingenuous knowing that we have over 600 units in poor condition throughout the county, many, most of them in Binghamton, over 350 who, that are in substandard conditions to say that this is a code concern and that it's a public health concern when by not changing any of the operations within code and in fact reducing capacity were exacerbating that public health concern.
These are the only properties that the city of Binghamton owns though. So we have an increased liability, certainly if tonight there was a fire at any one of these properties and there was a loss of life, God forbid, right? That is going to potentially affect the city from a liability standpoint, much greater than at a privately owned property. It doesn't mean that that's not important, but it, it's, it's an added layer to think about when we, when we take these properties on.
But to consider the public health concern for individuals, the moment they are not only at risk. So individuals who receive an eviction notice are automatically 4% more likely to die than someone who's never walked through the eviction process at all. And so then you compound that with entering into having no other option but to access the homeless services sector. And the increased lengths of stay in emergency shelter locally, because we keep reducing our housing stock, which has already deteriorated to the extent in disrepair. So we're reducing our housing stock rather than truly identifying a strategy to maintain and preserve these properties. Like I understand representing city liability, but I need it to also be acknowledged and recognized that this is a life and death situation for actual residents and that certainly should be prioritized in terms up to and against city liability. I, I mean, we, so we asked the question for, I mean, these properties, other Anziru properties, because that was a large settlement, because that was an accomplishment of the city to pursue, no doubt. But we did make the request that instead of forcing current residents into homelessness, the withdrawal of those eviction notices and the eviction process, not for these five in particular, but the other impacted properties. And the institution of, again, a community-driven conversation around a plan for these properties, because there are other Anziru properties and there are other properties that just went to auction and are currently being bid through for other extremely harmful landlords. So can we move toward, rather than a process that is simply evict and move forward with demolition, a community-driven conversation around what we're going to do with these properties? That it's on the city for letting them deteriorate to the extent that we have. I'm not saying that's directly on your administration. This goes back decades, but it's still on the city and it should still be opportunity for residents because they're the ones who are
Yes. So I think the, the situations that are, that are right now happening in which there are evictions that are taking place at properties. I believe that, and, and four and a half Fayette is, is one of those examples. Forty-two Fayette is another example. Five Sturgis is another example. Councilman, I'm sure you've heard about the Northside Neighborhood Meeting. Is, you know, situations that are, are dangerous for the people that are living there and dangerous for the, for the other neighbors. In situations where properties are not occupied and can be secured, that to me is, is a different category. We have a little bit more time potentially to partner with community nonprofits to identify folks who may be interested in, in buying them. But also too, that we can't let that happen forever either, but we, we have more time. Again, the, the current eviction cases in the city of Binghamton deal with, you know, life safety issues that as a city and as mayor, I wouldn't feel comfortable kind of continuing that to, to go on in perpetuity, especially if we don't have someone willing to, you know, immediately take on the current code violations, even if they are possible to be fixed.
So Mayor, I'm glad you mentioned forty-two Fayette. So I've done some digging into that. And according to Munis, as of last week, the last code violation on that property was placed in 2021 by the current resident that lives there for garbage in the alleyway. So there is no outstanding code record that I can find of that. There is no letter of condemnation. I mean, in fact, NICEG just upgraded all the utilities on that property in less than the last six months. And in walking the property, it has updated electric, updated furnace, updated hot water heater. There is no structural issues to the foundation that's any different than any hand-laid stone in any other basement of any house in the city of Binghamton. So I'm curious how, when you talk about partnerships, you don't want to partner with a veteran living there who wants to buy it for four times the amount a developer offered to knock it down and who is getting grants lined up to rehabilitate it. Yeah, the roof is bad on it and the back porch is bad, but last time I checked in code, that doesn't cause condemnation.
So the city wouldn't cite itself as part of code cases, the, the
But if the city didn't get them till last year, why is there no code violations for 2022 and 2023 then?
I'm not sure. I know that during that time we were in active litigation with Mr. Anzirut. Again, as requested by city council in November of last year, our vacant property officer went through forty-two Fayette Street. Roof appears to be in poor condition. I mean, I can, I can read off all these.
And we've, we've seen that. And I think the, I mean, the resident was there when the officer walked through and can report that tools weren't used, that it was simply a walkthrough observation. And that is difficult to swallow, given all of what President Dundon just represented. I think as well, in terms of the timeline and this urgency in terms of eviction that you've identified, I want to point out that that resident, since we're camping out for a bit on forty-two Fayette, 2012 was his first introduction to our well-known local slum lords. So his first property on Holly Street, that was under Gary French's portfolio, one of the worst before Anzirut, that was then taken over by Craig and Irene Spencer, same category in terms of slum lord. 2012, 2014, 2016, Anzirut took it over in 2016. This is a resident who has had to deal with slum lord after slum lord, and he has made it work because his alternatives are incredibly limited. So he's made repairs at every property. He's paid rent at every property. It is habitable for him. In the years that he has resided in these properties, he then trans, moved to forty-two Fayette. And all of this is representing no issue with habitability. But you're citing a, a non-dated memo done by the vacant property officer that doesn't have a supplemental paper trail, like it's, this is the city's failure to preserve housing stock coming down on a resident who is already extremely vulnerable, has demonstrated years of willingness to take over this property. This has been his home. And we're just saying sorry, the city's concerned about liability.
And I want to chime in there and ask you a question, Mayor. How often is it when a property officer walks a property to condemn it? They take a local developer with them on that. Seeing that, I mean, I can say the developer's name. I'm going to try to keep his name out of my mouth. But he got to walk that property with the code officer. And from my understanding, he, a developer buys the property that he shouldn't have had any right to be there to begin with. And from my understanding, the city wasn't offering any so I don't know why there would have been a little walk with a property officer to condemn a property. It just seems a little suspicious.
So again, the memo that was circulated to city council was a result of a request by city council to have, and I think it was Councilman Hotchkiss, to have some sort of documentation. The walkthrough was done in the context of a, a next door property owner purchasing the property for the, the purpose of demolition. So it would not be strange for a person who has expressed an interest in a property to, to do a walkthrough with a city representative to see if that was something that they were, they were interested in.
So my question is too, is why would the preference to be let a developer look at it, to buy the property, to knock it down instead of letting a vet buy it and actually rehabilitate the property and keep it on the tax rolls?
I, I think that, again, given the condition of the building, given the fact that there was basically illegal electrical work done. The fact that the property was not being maintained leads to just practical questions about whether this individual could, could handle the code violations. I, I think too, as a city, we have to think about, you know, if, if we just sold the property to this, the, the person who's currently living there and said, okay, you're now forced to remedy all of the code violations. And instead of a memo like this, it actually becomes citations.
It'd be better than him being homeless though. So even with the citations, like I feel like we could work with that, but it would be better than having one less person homeless on the street.
He also voluntarily made that offer. I mean, he was under, he was not under any kind of force or pressure when he made the offer to purchase. He was not under any kind of force or pressure when he worked with other tenants to take care of utility equipment or to replace the water heater or to replace the furnace. He has consistently demonstrated interest in this property, much, much more than any of the landlords he's had in the last decade. And to say that we can't presume this individual would be able, just doesn't seem like our, within our purview. He's represented interest. He's represented capacity.
And I, and I just think that, you know, there, there may be a difference of opinion on that. But, you know, the, the property, if it were to be in his hands, he would have to, you know, following New York State Building Code, you know, immediately be responsible for the conditions that are there. The city would knowingly, we would know about the conditions before. And so, you know, does that individual have, have the means to able to make these improvements or are the improvements that are needed to make it feasible? When you have an illegal conversion from a four unit to a three unit, illegal electrical work, improper installation of those water tanks, no permits that were ever pulled for this. HVAC done without permits, water and plumbing leaks in a third floor apartment and, and kind of a litany of things. Is it practical and is it likely that this individual is able to, to make those repairs under the, the city's code enforcement?
I don't think any of us would be representing. It would be completely on this individual who again has indicated his interest and capacity to move forward with rehabilitation. The city took ownership of this property and all of our discussion tonight about there was no plan or there was a plan that you represented, but it was an internal plan. The responsibility and truly onus should be on the city to support this resident and to identify options for him in terms of rehabilitation. He has already had meetings with a number of nonprofits locally who do provide home remediation and home repair funding. He knows that he's eligible, but I, I don't at all feel like it would be an extra burden on us representing the city after we took ownership to now facilitate this opportunity for an individual who wants to secure his home and expand the stock locally, because there are at this point additional units in it as well.
The individual was working with a local veteran support group. Our office was in, in contact with them and you can, you can reach out to them. I mean, part of what decisions being made is in terms of feedback that I've received from, from them about the situation that exists there.
From the Southern Tier Veteran Support Group? Is that who you're identifying?
I don't think so. I, it's more tied to the, to the Vet Center.
And so you spoke to them instead of speaking to the tenant himself about his purchase office?
Folks in my office spoke to the tenant themselves. I spoke to the, the veteran support group. Part of what we were working to do is to find supports for him, to identify other housing options for him. You know, that's, that was an important part of the discussion. So this veteran is, is not disabled. I know that was said by some members of city council.
Yep. And I had to react that. I was hearsay before I actually met him and then I've clarified that in the past.
And I appreciate that. The, the, unless there's evidence to the contrary, this individual has not been paying any rent since the city took it over.
He, he did pay overdue thousand dollar water bill that the treasurer's office wrote right on their payment in lieu of rent.
I also have receipts of his payment before he discovered that the city assumed ownership, but the ownership has not otherwise indicated expectation of rent post-ownership.
Yeah. Nor, nor were we asking for it and continue to not ask for it.
But you just represented it as a default on his part?
No, I, I just said that it was said that he had been paying rent. Well, it, it was, the individual has had, I think, a lot of, let me backtrack for a second. This specific property is, is, is blighted. There are a number of concerns from a code perspective. And if the wish of city council is to have code do a full workup and, you know, cite specific sections of the, the New York State Code where the building is deficient and what the remedies and timelines for that would be with the consent, I mean, of the, of the, the current tenant, the current person who's living there. We can do that. I just think, again, we have to be thinking from a practical standpoint on should the city give ownership to the individual that's there? Is it likely that they're going to have the wherewithal, funding, et cetera, to, to make these, make these changes and upgrades quickly? Obviously, if there's a transfer of property, that liability piece that I mentioned earlier is, is no longer there. But is it, is it likely to happen? And is there a concrete plan for that happening? My position is, is that in experience in doing this for a number of years, that it's not likely to happen. That's why, you know, I have the position that I do. Is it possible? Of course. And also too, what is the, the feasibility from a financial standpoint, as was noted in the code report? Specifically, the roof and foundation issues, you know, could be prohibitively expensive, if even possible.
I would love to have code do a full workup and I would like to be on that walk with them. So I can see what they're pointing out because I walked that whole basement. There is no foundation to where you can see through the outside. It has a little ripple to it. And I'm sure if we checked every other basement in Broom County that's been settling for a hundred years, they all have a little ripple to their basement. But there's noers where you can see outside. There's noers where you can see waters coming in, which even then my basement leaks a little bit of water, depending on how saturated the ground is. So yeah, I, I would love to do that and I would love to take a walk with the, the property inspector when he's doing it.
And if that's being offered, what I would specifically reiterate is our request, given the timeline, because now this resident is looking at a March 19th adjournment date for eviction. So if we're pursuing alternatives and you're saying that you have a position but are willing to consider council's position, then I would again request that that eviction be withdrawn and that time and space and conversation be had regarding this particular property of forty-two Fayette.
I'm not sure I can, I can give you an answer right now, but I, I would again, just continue to maintain that I think that specifically just the illegal electrical work alone puts the city in a very difficult position to say that it's something that we should just continue to, to allow to, to, to exist. And that if, if there's not a very clear, concrete plan, if there's not a
Is it possible to do a contract with like a clawback kind of a thing where we sell it basically immediately or close to immediately, however, not an expert in any of this, that if money and things tied to it, pay the back and then
I guess the question is, is, you know, is, is there a plan? Is there any, you know, aside from this offered a purpose?
When you took it over. So the fact that you're asking that question, we're asking each other the same question. But you're in a position because you've moved forward with eviction to hold that over this process. We're, we have discussed potential plans. We're discussing additional components of a potential plan now. And we're willing to continue that conversation. But asking that question, when we are simultaneously asking that question due to a lack of a plan in the first place, doesn't feel like a, a, an appropriate position.
Technically, we shouldn't have a plan. There should have been a plan already before this was even, this was before we were even on council. I would say another thing too. I, I know Mayor, you said a few things about, you know, working with different communities. And Rebecca said maybe like some community input on these things. I definitely think that that is one thing that we really need to kind of do in the city. Make sure that we're involving more people in these processes. And also with working with nonprofits, I think we need to like step outside of the box and work with different nonprofits. There are a lot of people here who want to work with the city. But, you know, from what I'm hearing, they're, they, they're, they're having a lot of trouble getting in. So I think that's just one of the suggestions I think that we should do here in the city of Binghamton.
What does council feel would be a reasonable timeline to have some type of plan presented to myself and council on forty-two Fayette for the, the current owner to address these concerns? I, I also don't know. I mean, if, if code, if code goes in and the property should be condemned. I mean, if, if code, if code goes in and the property should be condemned, unfit for human habitation, and I don't know what the answer to that is, but what then do we do in the meantime?
Well, that's kind of where I've been behind the eight ball. Because like I said, I checked Munis a week ago and some of the stuff you're reading off, there is no record in Munis from code, for code violations. So I, I don't even know where to begin with when there's no record in our actual Munis system of any code violations.
I don't think it would be unreasonable to have a, a potential plan identified by, and this is, this is if the eviction is withdrawn in order to allow for this timeline. But by the 19th, which would be next Wednesday, which is the date of his adjournment date. So typically he would be standing in front of a judge to receive or not an eviction warrant. By the 19th, identifying a plan collectively to move forward. And the next steps would be dependent on that actual plan. I mean, if the, I mean, code very often does unfortunately. And that's the, I mean, that's the challenge at times of, of using code to displace tenants if a property is uninhabitable. We're seeing that increasingly so. And it's a challenge when it comes to just chronic displacement and lack of affordable options. But to answer your question directly, I'm okay identifying the 19th, by the 19th for a plan in writing. If you're willing to withdraw the eviction as it stands now and the next steps would be dependent on what the outcomes of the first component of the plan are.
And again, a, a code review soup to nuts of, of the property, knowing full well that it could be deemed as unfit for human habitation.
But at least then we'll actually know. Cause like I said, when I double checked and saw enough.
Yeah. Uh, I'll have to, I'll have to confer with council. We have also outside council that's working on this too. Uh, I, I, I think, um,
Can I break in for one second? Just the other properties that are in this, with it, going back to the actual,
DRL?
Yes, yes, the, the ESD grant. Two, three, four, four and a half Fayette and 12 Rutherford and 42. Those are the ones that are identified and are those the only ones? Or will they allow us to substitute other properties?
I'm not sure, but those were the, the properties that were identified in, in the grant. I think a conversation with ESD, this is a brand new program. This is new for the governor's pro housing communities.
And I, I saw in the grants were received, there's a wide variety of, I mean, some of them have very, very specific projects and some of them are more general like ours seem to be. But I, I, so I'm not, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Councilwoman Rathma, I'll throw this at you just because I assume you probably have the information at your fingertips. Two, three, four, four and a half, the other properties mentioned here, are there any of these similar concerns there? Are these empty now? Are there any other tenants or are there evictions pending on these other properties? We're going to have this discussion again, or are they already empty or what? Or Mr. Mayor?
Four and a half Fayette, I know has active, uh, has an active eviction. That is a property from just a public safety standpoint that, uh, is out of control. There are many arrests almost on a weekly basis, narcotics activity. That is more a squatter situation. 42 Fayette, uh, the individual is a bona fide tenant who's been there for, for a long period of time. Four and a half Fayette is, is not that sort of situation. Yeah. Four and a half, six Fayette is also from an address standpoint. The, the other properties, uh, I believe are, are vacant. I, I don't think that there's any, uh, anyone living in them.
For 12 Rutherford, I believe we have an eviction proceeding as well.
Okay.
I, I, uh, my mother was actually dropping me off to when we formed up for the parade and we went down Fayette and she had now been down that end of Fayette in, you know, gosh only knows how long it's kind of, you know, that odd corner. And she's like, I can't believe this is Binghamton. It's, it is a very sad situation.
I think that's a, an incredibly relevant point to make as part of this conversation is that there are hundreds of these properties in the city that have been allowed to deteriorate. I understand there's the added component of city liability and city responsibility and taking on the Ansarut properties. I do get that, but if we're going to presume or project a sense of urgency, there are an estimated 1,500 households in the city who are dealing with conditions. And to force one out into displacement when there could be alternative options is the conversation that we're trying to have.
Absolutely.
So to bring the meeting back on track, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
I, I do.
Ball, bro.
I do.
Oh, I have one more quick, just, uh, quickly funding wise. This is, so this is ESD money and then our match, our local match is actually CDBG money, I believe.
That's correct. Yep. It's a CDBG demolition law.
Out of that pot we've already set aside for demolitions.
Yes.
Under CDBG, coming out of that.
That CDBG amount was significantly increased in this year's, uh, budget. We're at 468 grand, just under 467 grand for CDBG. Allocated specifically for demolition.
And that's fiscal year 50, right? Which would have started last September or technically, but yes.
I guess my, my only thing is, um, the, this falls into the, um, pro housing category because it creates vacant space where you could do new development, right? But the, the city's track record or from my perspective and what I've observed is that, uh, there's very rarely new development on the sites that were demolished. And I think probably, uh, the lower end of Fayette, those lower numbers, there'll be like a larger parcel there altogether. But, um, for, for 42 Fayette, if there's to be any chance of like redevelopment, I think it'd be incredibly rare. So if we're, if we're trying to consider the number of like units for the, any new opportunity there, I think that's very, very limited, just purely on the size of the lot and, um, what's going on. So that's, and I guess, um, you, you've been paid a lot closer attention to this, but how many times can you think of, or is there any tracking of it? Where a new building was put up where there has been a demolition?
Well, one that comes to mind and actually one that councilwoman Rathma was involved in, it was, uh, on Virgil Street, uh, 31 Virgil. There was a, uh, over many years, the city demolished properties. And then, uh, we were able to get funding to have family Richmond Network build new. That, that just comes to mind right off the top of my head. But no, it's not, it's not often. And I think if you look at the cost of new construction now from, from ground up versus rehab, it's a lot more expensive, uh, to build, to build new.
And that's,
These would qualify as infill, right? With, with the new states?
Yeah.
Infill?
So block by block, and like I said, we'll, we'll have news this week on it where, uh, uh, 300 or 400,000, uh, is available to nonprofits who want to build new housing on vacant lots. Certainly the city has, has a large number of them. So it's basically if nonprofits are interested, they can, uh, talk to the city, see what's out there in terms of lots of their specific neighborhoods or specific sizes they need. And then can apply to, uh, homes and community renewal for, uh, for, for funding.
Is it simple for council to each get their list of such lots, right, for their district?
I have a, I have a master kind of list of what we have right now. I can circulate that around. I, I don't have it by district.
Okay. Thank you.
So.
Yeah.
All right. So because, um, rehabilitation is less expensive than new construction. If you're completely considering, it's just like whatever, three to four units for 42 Fayette Street. The chance of new construction there is pretty, pretty slim. So if we were to invest or in the rehabilitation, then we're preserving units rather than losing them. That's, that's really my last little argument that I haven't heard made yet. So.
Yeah. And I think it's safe to say that we have more housing stock that's in need of rehabilitation than there is grant money out there to facilitate it. Or on, on the private sector, willing folks to take on that level of risk. Even with rehabilitations, uh, you're looking at a huge amount. If you get into asbestos abatement and you get into, again, a foundation or roof issues, whatever it may be. So even in situations where we say, hey, this really should be rehabbed or we should save it. One E2 Holly is a great example of that is there's historic aspects. It's a very, very large property. But to rehabilitate that, you know, you're looking at well over a million dollars, I'm sure. And, uh, are there grants out there to support something like that? Uh, or are, is there someone in the private sector willing to, you know, we're not sure. But that's kind of what happens and the city on an annual basis does identify scatter site opportunities with nonprofit providers to do exactly that. And they're going to be paying 300,000 plus per unit. But that's just the cost of kind of what it takes. And we can kind of continue to do that, but we're always going to have more properties in need of rehab than we have the funding to, to support those rehabs.
I, I just had another thing too. I know that usually like when code comes out to a place, they give them time to remedy that, correct? So even if they came out to 42 Fayette, um, and they said that it, you know, it's not inhabitable. We, they, he would still have time to get those repairs made.
That's correct. Yeah. And that would, that, yes.
Okay. Wanted to make sure.
So, so look, and I'm, I'm reading the room here on the grant. Obviously nothing's going to happen with the grant right now, uh, I, I would assume. So, and that's okay. That was part of why I came down to do the presentation frankly, is to just kind of clear the error as it relates to 42 Fayette.
You have, you have a press conference regarding this grant tomorrow though, right?
It, no, not this one. No.
Okay. Just making sure. I don't want you to say city council's holding it up.
It, well, it wasn't, it's not checked off for expedition.
Okay.
No, no. And, and look, this is something where I wanted to present. I really just wanted to, this to be a jumping off point to have a conversation on 42 Fayette, have this conversation, I suppose. But no, this is not related to the grant. The, the block by block grant, which is basically a solicitation of, hey, nonprofits have access to this funding. There's a partnership with Senator Webb, Assemblywoman Lepardo. Let's get as many people interested in doing this in the city of Binghamton as possible. Not related to this.
Making sure.
Yeah. I got one, I got one last thing. I guess my other kind of, uh, point is I think it's a little bit weird that, uh, 12 Rutherford would be held for, was it flood mitigation for, is that what you said?
Yeah. It's not in the flood zone, but it's, it's close.
Right. And so the same is true for all of the Fayette, the like two, two, three, four Fayette. It's like, if we were to redraw the flood, update the flood maps, they're definitely incorporated in that.
When you say not in the flood zone, which flood zone are you referring to? The adopted one or the one that we kind of function off of?
I usually use the preliminary, at least that's me when I'm looking at a property. Again, that was just as part of a grant application to show a variety of different things. When it actually comes down to utilizing this ESD grant for scatter site blight, individual, you know, decisions have to be made. But it's a way that we can again leverage state money to, to pay for, uh, getting rid of that blight.
Does anybody else have any other comments or questions on it regarding this RL? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming down, mayor. Appreciate these conversations.
Councilwoman?
Sorry. What should we expect in terms of, so you represented, you'll speak to corp counsel about withdrawing the eviction to allow for a timeframe where a plan can be developed? And that timeframe where we've represented, we're okay developing a plan would be the 19th. Is that the next step? You're, you're speaking with corp counsel about withdrawing that eviction?
Speaking with corporation councils while our, our outside council for them to counsel me on that, that question. But, uh, I will do that first thing tomorrow and, and get back to members of city council.
Thank you.
On that. And councilwoman, I felt like I wasn't looking your direction today, but welcome. This is my first work session that you've been, uh, here. So thank you. Okay.
Thank you so much, mayor. You have a good evening. So our next presenter is Chuck Robinson on RL 25 dash 64. And that is in the finance committee and I will hand this over to council member Kavanaugh.
Good evening, CR. Okay. So we're still, we're still cleaning up, uh, 2024. You got your, you got the information from the golf course, I'm guessing.
Yes, I did.
It ends up being that we're what $42,000 in the hole?
Yes.
No pun intended?
That was a good one.
It was actually a really bad one, but anyway.
I liked it.
All right. So, um, and there goes my.
Yeah. Do you want me to just get?
Yeah.
Just answer some questions? I'm sure everybody's got questions. I did, I, excuse me, I did have a conversation. I did have a conversation with Chris Strand, the PGA, uh, vice president there. And, uh, he had, uh, uh, some good insights as to what happened. Basically we had the record number of rounds this year.
We heard a very rosy picture from him. Yeah.
Oh, yes. Uh, he, the, the golf course did exceptionally well this year. Even though we had increased revenues, we also had increased expenses, um, mainly due to, and you're going to hear this repeatedly, and hopefully this is the last one for 2024, electricity costs. They, what's that? Well, for 2024, but let's hope not for 2025. Uh, so basically that was pretty much about $11,000 of the $15,000 that was in the golf ops. The other part was they helped out with the build for the deck. We asked them to provide some funding for the deck, which was not in their budget. So basically it just basically got billed back to us, um, which contributed to their loss. Also, the, um, as the course is being used more and the golf carts being used more, they need a little bit more maintenance every year, even though they're only like three years old. They also needed to hire, um, some more maintenance people. And they hired them at a little bit more than the hourly rate, the minimum wage, which also increased the, um, rate for, uh, the labor. Also with the number of rounds, their credit card fees increased. So along with the increased profits come with the increased expenses. We're hoping that we captured all that in the budget process this year. I can't guarantee it with my new, with my new, me doing the new budget. But I'm pretty sure with his budget and my budget together, we, we came pretty close for 2025. Uh, also I made mention to Sarah before she left, she was going to talk to him. He apparently gets about a $5,000 marketing budget from Visit Binghamton. And he only got a thousand dollars from this year. And she was going to check and see why he only got a thousand dollars. I think it's just a way he filled out his application or something for funding. But Sarah's going to check on that for me and see why.
So I, I don't see a specific electricity line broken out.
No, no, it's, yeah, I'm sorry. It's in their golf operations. Their lines for their budget is separate. So we've tried to make our lines match pretty close to what, where they budget things. If we did, we'd have a budget, which is a mile long. Cause they have all their agro products in each line, like fertilizer and seed and da, 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 and da, 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 da.
Right, right. Utilities is not a weird thing to break out though.
That is, that it's not, but they just put it in their golf operations as a, as a total. They did have some pay, extra payroll processing fees because they have more payroll. I mean, all these little things added up into each of these budget lines. Uh, the food and beverage labor went up obviously because they opened up the deck, which, uh, which helped out with, uh, food and beverage profits, but they still had the expenses.
So this shortfall is, I, I am working from memory. We, we ran into about a hundred. working from memory, we, we run into about a hundred thousand dollar shortfall a year, I think, going back. As we're, so we're on the correct trajectory still or not?
Yes, because once the leases end, the leases, one lease is, is nine, about ninety seven, the other lease is about thirty four.
You're talking about golf carts?
The golf carts and the John Deere tractor leases. Once those are up, one ends in twenty seven and the one ends in twenty eight. We should see the, we should see the profits, absolutely.
How, how does that work? Is that like a lease to own?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't particularly think forty two thousand dollars is a, you know, tremendous thing for the city to absorb to provide an amenity like this, but the closer we get to break even and ideally making a little money, the better.
Right. I'm, I'm hopeful. Last year was a very good year for the golf course. We had a lot of, not a lot of rain days, if, if everybody remembers, it was really good summer. And basically, it's basically dependent upon the weather and how long they can go in the season from start to finish.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? So I did see that this was checked for expedition. Can I get a motion to expedite?
Make the motion.
Having a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Having a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Oh, Councilmember Rathman.
Aye.
Councilmember Adavetsky. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray.
Aye.
Council President Dundon.
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven zero.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. And I also want to say, welcome to Council, Councilwoman Murray. This is the first time I'm seeing you, I believe. So come by the office anytime. All right.
It's, this is also, I just, this is coming from fund balance essentially, right? From the, from general fund balance, from general fund to the golf fund.
Yes, yes. And then before anybody asks, yes, we're, the general fund's doing very well this year. As, as of today, but we still have a few more weeks of expenses.
What date is it today? What time is it?
It's, it's, it's on the record.
Have a good evening, C R. Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next presenter is Samantha Costello, the Deputy City Clerk. This is R L twenty five dash fifty four. It is in the M P A Committee, and I will turn this over to the Chairperson, Councilmember Middleton.
Hi, hi Samantha. This is R L twenty four dash, I mean, excuse me, R L twenty five dash fifty four. It's a resolution authorizing the Binghamton Rumble Ponies to conduct fireworks displays for twenty twenty five.
Thank you so much for having me. As you all know, the Clerk's Office is responsible for presenting the fireworks permit. So here I am, presenting R L two five dash five four regarding the authorization of the Binghamton Rumble Ponies to conduct fireworks displays in twenty twenty five.
So it's, I already, I see on here already, I looked at it, but it's, you already have the dates down and there shouldn't be any change to the dates.
Yep. So once they're approved for the permit, they're locked into those dates. They're not allowed to make changes to them. They're also locked into the times that are outlined in the charter. There were a couple of concerns that the mayor outlined regarding time shifts that happened last year in the fireworks displays. So I would like to also point to the fact that there, we are able to revoke the permit should they violate the terms of the permit.
That was my thing too. And is there a way that we could have it? I know this isn't, you're not, you're just merely presenting for them, but just a suggestion for next year, maybe having like something posted, maybe ever, you know, when they have, when they're going to have them. I think they do have something, but more, you know, just having it out more so that way people know. I know a lot of people, their dogs and, you know, they get anxious and even kids and adults when the fireworks come. So that might be something that next year when they, when they fill out, I mean, when they get this permit, just something where we can, they can actively communicate with the community. Are you going to say something, Adasa?
Yeah, so I was, in terms of if they violate the permit, not saying that they will, but if they were to, how does that?
Here I am not the Binghamton Rumble Ponies. I represent the Clerk's Office.
So that information gets cut, gets back to council? How, or, or does the Clerk's Office revoke it directly? Like, how, how does that actually function?
So and corporation counsel, please feel free to step in at any point, but typically how this would happen is if a noise ordinance violation was reported to the police department and they were cited for a noise ordinance violation, that noise ordinance violation would then be reported to the Clerk's Office as having violated the terms of the permit in the same way that any noise permit would be violated and then reported back to the Clerk's Office. We would then do an evaluation within the Clerk's Office if that actually violated the noise ordinance permit that we had provided in consultation with corporation counsel. And then depending on whether or not we found that violation to having happened, we would consult with corp counsel on how to move forward about continuing the permit or revoking the permit moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, that's roughly the process. Where, yeah, we get a complaint, we'd look and see if there was anything to it. And then, you know, from there, it's looking at what we want to do, whether it be sending a warning letter first or whether we go straight to revoking the permit or whatever.
Anybody else?
No, straightforward. And Sam is just representing. It's not her. But yeah, that's something we can discuss later on, but thank you so much.
I am happy to say from the Clerk's Office, we're always happy to discuss the terms of permits or how you might be interested in changing those over time, but we just bring these permits to the fore.
And also we're happy to pass along the message to the applicant. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, and moving on, our next presenter is Nate Hotchkiss, Councilmember for R L twenty five dash fifty five, and that is in the Employees Committee, and I will hand it over to Councilmember Murray.
Thank you. So regarding R L twenty five dash fifty five, which is an ordinance to amend the classification of the Commissioner of Public Works position.
Thank you. So the idea here is that we've had an acting commissioner of public works for quite some time. And around the conversations with the responsibility adjustments that seem to come through annually at this point, to compensate them for not having a commissioner of public works and having that position filled is that it's, it's not attractive because that position is, gives you like less, less stability in your job, basically because it's a mayoral appointment. And I also attached that I think last year, yeah, last year around this time, we had also changed how we how the city appoints or hires the treasurer. And this is copying, basically copying how we, what we did with the treasurer, because there was difficulty filling that position. So we moved it, that was moved from a, a mayoral appointment to management tested. And that's what, this is my quick, quick and dirty kind of doing the same solution that I've seen work so far to make it possible for us to fill the commissioner of public works position. So.
So I actually have a question for corp counsel. The way we did that with the treasurer, because the mayor abdicated for it, that was allowed for us to do this, we would need a referendum, wouldn't we, or no?
Yes.
I thought you were going to go with a one word answer.
Go ahead.
No, I question whether we were actually able to do what we did last year. Because the law is if you're reducing the power of an elected official, it has to go to a referendum, just because.
Similar to the Human Rights Commission.
Just because both elected officials or both types of elected officials are agreeing to it, doesn't change the necessity of a referendum, I don't think.
I would have to go back and see exactly what we did last year versus this. Yeah, obviously, if we were to move forward with this, whatever the requirement was in terms of enacting it, we'd make sure that was followed.
And I, I still question last year.
Similar to the Human Rights Commission, the first time when they took the power away from council, even if council at the time abdicated it, they took power from council without a referendum. So it's, we, we've, we're seeing this pattern that it's selective when we need a referendum and when we don't.
My position is it's not selective. Again, I, I don't know how they did the Human Rights Commission previously. And like I said, I have to look back and see what exactly was done with the treasurer position and how that was enacted. I'll take a look and see if this specifically requires a referendum or not. And certainly if it does, like I said, we'll follow whatever the required process is.
I, I mean, I, I think that's one question, and I think another question is, is the actual merit of the idea, which I am not, I don't have a position on yet.
I, I mean, to even have a comprehensive five-year plan from the city and not have a commissioner of public works that, I mean, you kind of need one to do the other. And I mean, yeah, we have somebody acting in that role, but at the same time, who takes on the liability if it is, there is no actual commissioner of public works? It falls on the mayor, falls on just the city? I, I mean, not having that or the deputy, I think, are huge holes for the city that need to be filled.
Well, I mean, and that's so okay then, but that, that's a, that's a conversation to have. And the reason that it's not being filled is what? I mean, how, we, this is not historically, I don't think, been a problem. So.
It technically hasn't been filled since the big snowstorm in twenty eighteen when the Commissioner and Deputy Commissioner of Public Works was removed by Rich David over snow removal, and it's never been filled since then.
So that's a question of, so that was a mayor essentially holding his appointees to account in the way he saw fit at that time. And it's a question of whether that should be the model or should, you know, it be more of a model of civil servant, where it's, where it's, you know, a contract, hired in a contract and management tested. I, I mean, I, I think that's the conversation we, we're going to have.
Isn't that the onus of the legislation or the request to have that conversation?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, yes, I think.
I mean, because from my standpoint, if I was sitting in Josh Palludi's shoes and I can stay on a supervisor streets that's management tested, you can't just fire me at will. Versus I've spent twenty five years working in the city, I become commissioner and something happens and now I'm just out the door. So I, I mean, that's why, depending on how it was handled in twenty eighteen that the office saw, is why I don't think anybody stepped up internally.
Another question. Can you take power away from any, Robert, can you take away power from anyone without, did I miss that question? Did you guys ask that? Without a referendum, did you guys ask that? I was in the bathroom. You did? Thank you. I'll talk later. I missed it. I was in the bathroom.
Oh.
All right.
So basically this is like food for thought. I think it just kind of doesn't sit well with me that we have these, it, it's not just one, one department that we just continually have these acting, acting roles, acting commissioners. So this was my first attempt at a solution for it. And I think ultimately, like the, the role of commissioner of public works isn't inherently political. Like the bowing streets, paving streets, making sure the trash gets picked up. I don't think that's, I don't know, doesn't strike me as extremely political. I mean, we can make it that way.
Right. I was gonna, I was gonna say, I mean, you could say the same thing about code, but I, you would, you know, personnel, as they say, personnel is policy.
Could be. But anyways, just.
Sample of somebody that we moved to management tested, right? Code.
I, not. I don't remember that. And I don't know when that was done, but.
E, but this body, not, not us sitting here. On that one?
I know we did it with the treasurer. That was the position.
Us, I'm saying a previous council. Am I correct on that? I'm looking around.
So I don't know the history on that. We could look it up, but.
I, I mean, I, I think Nate, this is great. You got the conversation started. I think depending on what legal advice you get from corp counsel is how we, we move forward. So.
Thanks. And I, I guess the, the last piece of it is if you're in a department for ten to twenty years and you've like moved up through the rank through like different management, and then it's now, you're one step away from the, like, the, being the department head, but the, it, it's not attractive because like there's no security in it. I, I think there's something like fatally wrong there.
I agree a hundred percent. They should all be management tested positions. If you don't have anything else, can we move on?
Yep, we can move on.
Okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Hotchkiss. So the next one, Councilmember Rebecca Rathman will be presenting. This is R L twenty five dash fifty three. I need somebody else in planning. I can't have her. And Councilmember Hotchkiss will be handling this.
All right. This is R L twenty five dash fifty three, a local, to establish local auto established proactive rental housing inspection program and amend chapter two sixty five dash six. So do you want to get started on this one?
Sure.
Let's begin the journey.
Sure. Just by way of introduction, proactive code enforcement is an alternative approach to the traditional reactive or complaint based inspection system deployed by municipalities to ensure the safety, the habitability of rental housing. The model itself, which includes registration and licensing requirements for rental properties, as well as regular routine inspections, really established itself within public policy in the nineteen sixties when a Supreme Court case out of San Francisco confirmed that local governments have a vested interest in determining the physical conditions of buildings which residents occupy. So with an estimated six hundred and seventy two occupied units throughout Broom County in poor condition and at least three hundred and fifty two considered to be in substandard condition by introducing this legislation, I am affirming locally what the housing sector at large has known for decades, namely that relying solely on a complaint based code enforcement system is insufficient for preserving the safety and habitability of existing stock. I'm happy to answer any questions on the legislation or the supporting materials that were submitted. I do also want to reiterate that proactive approaches are most effective when the planning and the implementation are community driven. So I hope to host multiple opportunities for resident feedback and I'm open to amendments based on those conversations.
I think in, in general, my, my sense of the community is that there there's a lot of dissatisfaction with Binghamton code enforcement. So the, and I think that's been acknowledged through some of the mayor's efforts in his, his reforms, which is still like just stronger. Want to say like disciplinary measures on like the complaint end, but this kind of brings out a whole new like theory, which I'm looking forward to exploring and like conceptually, I, I support. I guess the one piece here is that a lot of this, or some of this is reliant on HUD funding and C D B G funds to like make this a reality.
Sorry, go ahead with your question.
But anyways, if we don't have the, if something happens with our, our federal government and we no longer have the HUD funding that we would typically enjoy, is, does that kind of put a?
It, it doesn't impact this program's implementation and operational viability entirely. So the HUD funds in the supporting materials and how the recommended restructure of code operations to maximize C D B G reimbursement opportunities. All of that is representative of existing operations only being reimbursed at fifty percent. So that's a, an alternative. So that's a, an alternative structure to pursue. But with the proactive program as it's currently written, it would not only sustain itself, including hiring the additional four code officers we anticipate will be needed to accomplish inspections in a three-year timeframe. But it also generates program income that we can turn around and put back into the operations of code in both a legal and viable way to support code operations throughout the department. Ideally, in an ideal world where our government doesn't fall apart and CDBG reimbursement is still available, that restructure will support expanding capacity. And the program income can be allocated specifically for rehabilitation efforts for landlords who are identified within the inspection or throughout the inspection process to have cited violations, but otherwise demonstrate responsible interest and desire to remediate.
Thank you. And I'm trying to continue to familiarize myself with all like the nuance of this. But is this going to be, is participation voluntary?
For property owners?
Yeah.
No. There, the options, so this would mandate a rental registration requirement as well as an inspection requirement to receive an initial notice of compliance. Again, we anticipate that that rollout would take three years just from the jump to accomplish the inspections. There are options. There are dozens of municipalities who have implemented proactive code enforcement strategies. So we have many cities to consider mimicking, many models to, to really deliberate. There are options when it comes to tiering subsequent inspections. The, I believe Rochester and Minnesota has a tiering approach where landlords who demonstrate a consistent history of compliance, little to no code violations, remediation within identified correction timelines, actually receive a reduced, or I should say, a, an extended inspection timeframe. So the rotation for a responsible landlord in this regard, rather than three years, they could graduate to a five-to-six-year rotation so that the burden is really on the property owners who are not responsibly maintaining their properties as targets within this program.
Is this significantly different than the existing rental registry program? And if so, how?
The, it's different from the existing rental registration program, and it also maintains some enforcement capacity that our broader code ordinances do not include, which add teeth to, I'm not sure if you have heard Supervisor Schleider represent his position as the supervisor of code, the code observation department as opposed to the code enforcement department. He represents it that way because current ordinances lack enforcement capacity. So in terms of the rental registration within 2656 as it's written, the, it does not require a licensing component. So rental registration is required, that then triggers a, it's supposed to trigger a triannual inspection. What we have in this ordinance is that it will be unlawful to operate a rental business within the city of Binghamton without obtaining that notice of compliance that functions as a license to operate. That resolves, so for several years, there's been the perspective within the current code enforcement department regarding whether or not compulsory inspections are constitutional. I would direct folks to the supporting materials. I had a conversation specifically about that with Alan Malik, who is the national expert on proactive code, identifying that concern in terms of compulsory inspections being unconstitutional. He brought up the camera decision that I referenced out of San Francisco earlier to note that it's the licensing component that satisfies that legal requirement. And that's fleshed out, I can read it if that's helpful for the record, actually. Let me just pull it up. I do want to note, speaking of Alan Malik and his national expertise when it comes to proactive code, the city of Binghamton has entered as a result of an application that was submitted, hoping to support the implementation and rollout of this ordinance. The city of Binghamton is in the second round with the Center for Community Progress being considered for a substantial opportunity for technical assistance at no cost to the city. Alan Malik is, I believe, at least contracted with Center for Community Progress. He may work directly for them now. But to read his response when I asked about the compulsory inspection piece. So I identified that the barrier we've run up against locally is in Administration and Corporation Council that has deemed compulsory inspections unconstitutional, largely in the context of denying that landlord the operation of business. Alan's response was that well over 1,000 municipalities have passed compulsory inspection ordinances. He's not aware of a single case at the federal or state level that held compulsory inspections of rental properties are themselves unconstitutional. The issue is, are warrants required if consent is not given? The answer is yes, plus the other aspects of the camera decision, which is where licensing comes in. He reiterated, a landlord should not be able to operate their business. No one should be allowed to operate a business that is in violation of basic health and safety requirements. You would not allow a dry cleaner to operate a business that permeates the atmosphere with noxious fumes. You would not allow a restaurant to operate with cockroaches swimming in pasta. There is no difference. If you do not have evidence that an apartment meets health and safety standards, it should not be occupied by a, by a human being. How do you get that evidence? You do an inspection.
I, I really, really love this. Like, I love the ideas and I'm, I really support it. I think that it probably should go to like a committee, you know, just so we could start like getting the ball.
Yeah, I appreciate that and absolutely agree. I think what I'm hoping for, like this, again, this, not only do I just personally and generally believe that the policies discussed here in City Hall that are going to directly impact residents should include those residents. But again, proactive code approaches are most effective when they're community-driven. So neighborhood association conversations, town halls, like we've held with, like we held with Good Cause, I anticipate and hope for all of that so that we can get renter feedback, homeowner feedback, certainly property owner feedback, and truly make this a collaborative approach that ultimately will end up preserving not only the conditions of properties preserving our housing stock, but that preserves the tax base, that preserves property values, and ultimately preserves community stability. And that's what we need.
Most, yeah. Instead of knocking things down. Sorry.
And we're this, trying to piece it together with Good Cause. So the renovations and fixing that come out of proactive code enforcement would be allowed to be added to people's rent? So if I'm following this along, so.
Yep, so technically, yes. I think some, many municipalities that have rolled out proactive code strategies that include rehabilitation assistance programs for landlords looking to rehab their properties and remediate conditions do require that if they're going to receive, whether it's through that rehabilitation assistance at the city level or through a, a third-party financial institution that has agreed to reduced interest rate loans for, for rehabilitation, that they are not raising rent and then putting the burden on those tenants.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments for Councilmember Rathman? Hearing none?
Whoa, 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 one second.
Listen, next time you're gonna get quicker, it's getting late.
Okay. My, the, you referenced the city of Syracuse and their proactive code enforcement. The, I haven't dug into it, but I remember the last time I saw it referenced in an article, it was due to some contention about the compliance, or like it hasn't roll, been able to roll out through the city. And I, I don't know when it, when their program began or something, but that's kind of a hurdle that I'm, I'm aware of with this. And I don't even, I don't know why I'm bringing it up.
No, that's, it's, well, it's in, I mean, the city of Syracuse is mentioned in the supporting materials for their municipal violations bureau that is an alternative to civil or criminal litigation in, in enforcement response. I think the ultimate model, if we're going to identify an upstate municipality to mimic, to connect with, and this conversation dates back to 2017. So we have had city of Rochester officials that meet with, that have met with the county, met with the health department, met with city officials. But it's, it's truly Rochester that is worth mimicking. But Syracuse specifically has a different enforcement approach that is administrative rather than civil or criminal.
Is this gonna interplay with the lead rental registry stuff? Is it something that we might be able to get some of that funding stream to help with this and provide them back the data that they need?
Yes, I think we absolutely look to leverage, maximize the leverage potential with the rental registry and proactive inspection program that the health department received an award for. The thing to note with the health department's award is they're not only, they've not moved forward, they're still in the public, actually, the public comment period for the actual state regulations that drive and guide that program. Public comment period just concluded, so the final product has not been released yet. But that program only covers two zip codes within the city of Binghamton, 13901, 13905, I believe. And so it's not a comprehensive solution, but it is several hundred thousand dollars that the team, the, the lead, the team over at the health department has repeatedly confirmed their interest in collaborating.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? And seeing that this is a lot, and I mean, I, I'm not even gonna attempt to lie. Rebecca, I've only scratched the surface on this. I've been so deep in the Siemens contract. So I definitely think this should go to committee and that, you know, any questions I have, instead of sitting here on the floor and dragging this out, I will just text you. So moving on, and this last bit, it is not gonna be an RL. Councilmember Matavetsky has been working on the noise ordinance and would like to give us a brief update before we can get out of here.
Yes, thank you. So first of all, I was a little surprised because when the noise or the request to update the noise ordinance came to us and they were talking about how it was unimplementable, not enforceable, I, I guess I assumed that like maybe Rochester wasn't still active, that there wasn't just the option of sending, like, a council at some point pass this as law. And it's, I don't know if it was ever in compliance with the city, like if they ever trained people and kept things in calibration. But Rochester still runs the program. I emailed with the, the director, he sent me towards some legislation he, Rutgers, sorry, what did I say? Rochester? Sorry. Rutgers, yes, Rutgers. You know, they're, they're definitely very much active. And now in the day of Zoom, you can actually do the trainings in part remotely and then save on time of actually going down. So I, I want to just kind of start with the clarity. We've had a number of these, and I'm just kind of seeing this pattern. Like the ATV, it was already illegal to drive the ATVs. We added legislation to strengthen it, and I supported that. Cannabis is another one that we're, we're looking at. I believe there's a, a meeting on that this week. My understanding is other areas without voting on that cannabis law, their mayors have prioritized dealing with those issues and have dealt with them. And I just want to represent that the noise ordinance, from what I can gather, could be implemented if it were a priority of the executive branch. So all of that being said, that does not mean that it doesn't need to be fixed. And so I will throw out, one of the fixes to the existing one is probably that these noise levels are, the max noise levels are probably too low based on what our clerk found this for me, the guide to New York City's noise code. And that has in it the decibels for whispering, normal conversation, vacuum cleaner, whether or not you could ever run a lawnmower in the city, right? So I, I do think the existing one does need to be fixed. Although, so then my thought was that we could take a more reasonable set of numbers updated from the previous legis, existing legislation and go with merging that in and going through the different categories to determine whether or not we want to say, okay, there's these kind of standards that were kind, kind of common sense standards about the length of the noise and all of those things. Where do we want to add in a meter reading? And where do we want to say, well, the dog's been barking for 45 minutes? And maybe the, the decibel of the dog being outside barking next door is not necessarily as important as the duration. So we may want to go through, and that's kind of the, my thought as a, a next step is for committee to go through and decide which specific types of things we actually need measurement for, and if there are items that we feel like potentially. Construction before a certain hour, maybe you don't need to prove the decibel because it's construction before the certain hour, and we don't need that extra level of evidence. So the decibel meter may be more useful in the context of like neighbor-to-neighbor complaints as opposed to things like construction or dogs. Putting that out there, I don't have a formal stance on how, how to, what we want to do in those cases. I think that's some discussion for, for the committee and for council in general on how and what we need a number assigned to. I reached out to a lot of police departments, code, environmental health, mayors that are using decibel meters. Nowadays, these things are not complicated. Most of them do not actually send their people to Rutgers. And so they just read a manual, and it's a pretty simple manual. There's also with iPhones, an actual like OSHA-approved app. It's only for, for Apple phones, so it's not a general solution. Most of the places that I spoke to do use a calibrated decibel meter, although I did find examples where people do not. One city in Colorado just uses something from Radio Shack. They have the most unusual model, which is they actually allow people to borrow the decibel meter, the Radio Shack decibel meter, from their environmental health department and take their own readings and videotape them from their property lines. And if they're willing to testify in court, then that's taken as good enough. If they're not willing, willing to testify in court, then they can send that information in. And if it's during the day, someone from environmental health can come out and copy, basically take the same measurements themselves with the, with the video. Or if it's outside of standard work hours, the police department could come and do that based on their availability. So that was just a very unique model that I found interesting because we know we have lots of bandwidth issues. So that was just a very unique model that I found interesting because we know we have lots of bandwidth issues. And there are different amounts that people use, different areas use their code versus their police department in different kind of ratios. Some some areas, it's basically entirely on the police department. Other areas, it's more of a daytime nighttime split. So there's different models for us to consider on that, but it's certainly common for it to not just live within the police department.
I yeah, one thing you you haven't mentioned yet that we discussed in our little meeting the other day was the I think when this initially came down and we were discussing it, council was really interested in maintaining some sort of objective measure.
Yes.
That that was has been historically represented by the decibel meter, which has not been perfect.
Oh, yes, yes.
But
Video camera.
So this law and most of these laws that we're looking at were written before body cams were common in common use anywhere and certainly not in our department. And now they are. And that is an emergent way to have an objective measure of what is going on that could be entered into into the ordinance and into into use.
So yeah, that was my conversation with the police department up at Buffalo. I reached out to them thinking that they were operating using decibel meters because they have that in their legislation. Then this is why you call people because weird search doesn't really work so well sometimes. They actually have both systems and they said over, you know, basically 99% of their noise complaints and the tickets and such that come out of it use the part of the noise ordinance that allows the the police to do it discretionarily. And that as far as they know, basically, no one bothered. They have the the decibel meters, but they live in a drawer. So yeah, basically what they said was, well, you know, when a police officer is going into, for example, a student party or some some such, their body camera footage shows there's a lot, a lot, a lot of people in a house and it's very kind of clear that there's a lot of noise. So they said that that's been fine. With my Colorado discussion, they I because I have been asking about like, have things been thrown out in court, things like that? They said the only time they had something thrown out in court was when they didn't have a video and it ended up leaning on the officer's discretion and they didn't they they didn't have that videotape of the the meter showing the context.
The Colorado example is Aspen, right? So plenty of high dollar lawyers willing to challenge things in court over very petty things. So if if that's being withstood, it's
In fact, I was told that that oftentimes when there's a noise issue that when the officer gets to the place, they're just handed the card for the attorney. So it's a little bit of a different situation than our than than locally, but it's a was an interesting discussions and they've been very kind to speak with me. But yeah, so basically I wanted to, oh, and I guess the other thing was in some of the smaller towns in New York State that I spoke with, they were they're really, really happy about having the decibel meters. They say their officers get called out. They basically, and again, I know it's not a city environment and whatnot, but they show the the number and they say, hey, this is over, you know, over the limit. And usually the people are just like, oh, my bad, I'm going to turn it down. And it doesn't become a thing. It's just instead of people coming at you and it being a he said, she said discretionary thing. They've found that having the meters actually deescalated situations and resolve things without additional conflict, which is nice, right? We want less things in court, less tickets, right? Anyway, that's my research and hopefully we'll move forward our discussion, working out the details. Thank you.
All right. After that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Having a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.